No, not that.
Okay. Now, you know what we're doing. Can anyone, everyone hear me? It's all right, this is most... Because I can hear the echo and the sound and it just means that I haven't got a clue how... Just shout if you can't hear me, just tap your ear, I know about tapping ears. So I'm all right with that. When Andrew asked me to work out a series for the whole year, I had several ideas which would have been marvelous to all of you. But then I felt God say, especially when we are coming on... At a time when we're thinking about making disciples, it got me thinking, what kind of people do we need to be to be disciple makers? And then I thought, that's complicated, let's make it simpler. What kind of words do we need to read? And so I gave Andrew a list of 11 words and I nearly changed it. But then I thought, hmm, I'd get in trouble, so I didn't. Last time, the first one, we looked at that word abide in John chapter 15. Abiding in Christ. It's an amazing chapter, really is. And, you know, I would say to you, as you... And I'm going to do the same, because I'm only doing these two and they're not there listening. Think about those words and study them. You know? So let's go back to John 15, let's look at the word abide, let's find out where else it is. And let's really take it on board. We are this year going to abide in Christ. Obviously, the next word is weakness. Hmm, that's an interesting word that we don't like to take hold of. We don't like people seeing our weaknesses. We don't like seeing our own weaknesses. You know, "Oh, I'm fine." You know, that kind of thing. But Paul has something different to say about weakness and that's the word we're looking at tonight. And I would like you, if you've got your Bibles, please to turn to 2 Corinthians chapter 12. 2 Corinthians chapter 12. It's the chapter in which Paul, at the beginning of the first 10 verses, tells us about his idea of weakness. So I'm going to read from verse 1 right through to verse 10. He says, "I must go on boasting, though there is nothing to be gained by it, I will go on to visions and revelations of the Lord. I know a man in Christ who 14 years ago was caught up to the third heaven. Whether in body or out of body, I do not know, God knows. And I know that this man was caught up into paradise. Whether in the body or out of the body, I do not know, God knows. And he heard things that cannot be told, which man may not utter. On behalf of this man, I will boast; but on my own behalf, I will not boast except of my weaknesses. Though if I should wish to boast, I would not be a fool, for I would be speaking the truth. But I refrain from it, so that no one may think more of me than he sees in me or hears from me. So to keep me from becoming conceited, because of the surpassing greatness of the revelations, a fawn was given me in the flesh, a messenger of Satan to harass me, to keep me from becoming conceited. Three times I pleaded with the Lord about this, that it should leave me. But he said to me, 'My grace is sufficient for you, for my power is made perfect in weakness. Therefore I will boast all the more gladly of my weaknesses, so that the power of Christ may rest upon me. For the sake of Christ then, I am content with weaknesses, insults, hardships, persecutions, and calamities; for when I am weak, I am strong.'" When you start to read about Paul, you begin to realize that actually, he had quite a revelation from God. Apart from the fact that he was a highly trained Pharisee, God trained him. Not the apostles, the other apostles or someone else, but God did. 2 Corinthians 11, the previous chapter, gives us a clue about what he's wanting to tell us in chapter 12. The problem is that although he preached the gospel to the Corinthians, others have come with a different gospel and are preaching to them. Now, he calls them super apostles, verse 6. False apostles, deceitful workmen, disguising themselves as apostles of Christ. He's not particularly impressed with them. Two things we know about them, they preached another gospel, other than the gospel of Christ that he preached. And the second thing was, he was after people's money. Because Paul describes them like this. He describes himself like this. He describes himself in verse 7 as, "I preach God's gospel to you free of charge." Free of charge. Paul supported himself. Yes, he got gifts from others, he was always incredibly grateful, but he never asked for them. So we find that Paul is dealing with people who came with lofty speech and wisdom. But other ideas of truth. And in a way, that's why Paul describes how he came to Corinth. Do you remember in 1 Corinthians chapter 2, this is what he says? "Now, I know nothing among you except Jesus Christ and Him crucified; and I was with you in weakness, and in fear, and much trembling. And my speech and my message were not in plausible words of wisdom, but in demonstration of the Spirit and of power." Actually, the Corinthians had a go at Paul because he didn't speak proper. A silly man, he preached like a Pharisee from Jerusalem and not like a Greek orator. He wasn't posh. He was straight. But he was also quaking with fear. He understood his weaknesses. And as we look at this passage in 2 Corinthians, I want us to understand our weakness. Weakness is not something to be hidden if you're a man or woman of God. It's something to be lifted up. Look at me, I am so weak. If anything goes right, it's not my fault. It must be God. It must be God. So we come proclaiming the truth by the Holy Spirit and by power. And when we begin to look at Paul's story, it's an interesting story. Right from the beginning, we know that he persecuted the church, but on the way to Damascus, he is felled, blind, into the ground, and he hears the word, "Saul, Saul..." "Why do you persecute me? Who are you, Lord?" And Jesus tells him who he is. His ministry starts with Jesus specifically speaking to him directly. That's the beginning of this amazing ministry. "For I did not receive it, the gospel," he says to the Galatians, "from any man; nor was I taught it, but I received it through the revelation of Jesus Christ." In fact, we know that it was three years later that he went first, went to Jerusalem, and he spent hours with Peter. And they discussed what they were preaching and he found that they... My goodness, in Jerusalem, they're preaching the same thing as I heard directly from Christ. And so he goes on with his ministry. This doesn't happen very often, does it? And it did to him. Now he goes further in this chapter to explain what happened. He goes on to explain about the visions and the dreams that he had, that he received 14 years earlier. Well, the book of 2 Corinthians has written 56 AD, so that means in 42 AD, he had an amazing revelation of God. And not just God, but as he says, of heaven and paradise and words that no man is able to speak or should speak. And so we find that he has this amazing vision. Now, he describes it quite interestingly, doesn't he? Because he says, "I know a man." You know? Well, I know a man, I see him in the mirror every morning as I look and think, "Oh, he's gone all over." It's him. It's him. He had a vision. Now, he's not even sure whether it was a vision that he saw, or he was actually physically in the third heaven, in the very presence of Christ in paradise. He didn't, he doesn't know. He just knows what he saw and what he heard. And he can't tell us what he heard. Interesting. So we have this amazing vision that he's had. Now, perhaps today, he could have written a book. Couldn't he? And it would have been one of the top books in the New York Times list. And he could have sold millions. And he could have been invited to every big church in the world. He could have had a television programme. Yeah? And been an international speaker of great repute. Yeah? And probably is only a jet as well. He could have had all those things, but didn't want them. He doesn't want them for a very good reason, because it's not about him. It's about God. Because he's a weak man. He's full of weaknesses. And he doesn't hide them. He shares them. "Don't believe like the publicity is saying." "Don't believe it." "Judge me," he says, "by what I say and who I am before you." Don't read the publicity. I just read it because in the bookshop, I get to look at a lot of books. And sometimes I'll find an author I've never heard before, so I get one of their books out. This guy had about six or seven books in the bookshop in different places. Well, he didn't know that, of course. So I got one of them and the first thing I realized was, oh, he's an international speaker. Well, so am I, I preached in Croatia, I wonder if he's ever preached in Croatia? I mean, you could be an international speaker by preaching the gospel and the Isle of Man, couldn't you, really? Almost. But then I began to read some of the things he was writing about. And the one thing I noticed straight away was, this man doesn't know his Bible. He was using scriptural examples that didn't say what he was saying. Do you know, all those books have disappeared from our bookshop?
I wonder why they went.
And I wonder who it was. "I know a man." Just because you're an international speaker or you're in the New York... This man was in the New York Top 25 Evangelical Speakers in the USA. Just shows you, they haven't got a clue what the gospel is and they're not surprised. Just because of the ongoing publicity doesn't mean, Paul says, "Don't believe my publicity. Don't believe what others say about me. Wait till I come, see what I say, see how I am, and then take me as I am, please." That's the first thing. But God acts as well in this situation. God gives him such great visions and dreams. But he says this in verse 7 of our reading. "So to keep me from being conceited, because of the surpassing greatness of the revelation..." God allows Satan to give him a fawn in the flesh. Satan thinks it's wonderful, it's his idea. This should slow him down. This should stop him, this should make him keep well away. Didn't. Because the one thing Satan hadn't cottoned on was that Paul was a man who knew he was weak. So if he looked deep and weaker, it didn't make any difference. We'll see something about that in a minute. Something, literally, it's something which causes serious trouble and difficulty. A fawn in the flesh. Now, there's been all sorts of discussion as to what that fawn in the flesh is. Personally, I believe that he had a serious eye problem. Not that he was blind or anything else, but he had an infection in his eyes. And if any of you have seen bad eye infections, listen to the description. Paul says to, in Galatians, he says, "You know it was because of a bodily ailment that I preached the gospel to you at first." The reason for that was that in the lowlands by the sea, there was a lot of malaria. There was a lot of disease. So maybe because he was, had this infection, or it could have been malaria, I suppose, he went up to the hill country, which was the area of Galatia, and went to those cities instead. But it's something he says after that. "And though my condition was a trial to you..." And I don't know, again, I don't know if you've seen someone with a terrible eye infection that shows, that gives off all sorts of things that is quite visual. It seems to be that. But he prays them, because he says, "You did not scorn or despise me; but you received me as an angel or as a messenger of God, as Christ Jesus himself." And then he says, "For I testify to you, that if possible, you would have gouged out your own eyes and given them to me." They were so deeply concerned, that's why I think that it was that. But it was obviously recurring. And of course, the medication wasn't there to deal with that in those days. And that unnaturally humbled him. Now look in the mirror. And it doesn't look very nice. But he had a job to do. So humbly, in his weakness, he went and did it, knowing that his weakness didn't prevent God doing what God was doing. So this is a recurring infection, I think. "My grace," says Jesus, "is sufficient for you." When he prayed three times, the answer was no three times. And the reason was, his grace was sufficient. God doesn't always answer our prayers. But we ought to listen, because he might tell us why. And here he was told, and then he goes on, "For my power is made perfect in weakness." Verse 9. God is Paul's sufficiency. And he is our sufficiency. But there's another important lesson here. That term, "made perfect," "made perfect in weakness," literally means to make happen. To make happen or to cause to happen for some end. So literally, what Jesus was saying was, "My power is made to happen in weakness." Now, the first time we see God's power in Scripture, it's when he said, "Let there be light," and there was light. And that didn't go through weakness. That power wasn't made perfect in weakness. It was in amazing strength, but God decided that he would work through mankind. And of course, when man fell, he didn't stop working through mankind. Noah was weak, we find that later on, when he gets drunk. He was full of weaknesses. But God worked through him in his power, in his sufficient grace. And that's the lesson that we need to learn about weakness. Through it, God makes things happen. God's power and our weakness leads to things happening that are God's purpose. And that's always the case in Scripture. With man, do you remember, Jesus says this to Peter, when the rich young ruler and Jesus says that... Talks about camels. And Peter says, "Well, how can anybody be saved then, if the rich can't be saved?" And God says, Jesus says, "With man, things are impossible; but with God, all things are possible." With human weakness, it's not possible. With God's strength, it is possible. Now, of course, there are two dangers in this. Number one is, we believe our own publicity. And we think that actually, we're rather gifted and things are rather special. The difficulty with that is that now we're on our own. And really, all we can aim for is what we can imagine. Remember, God can do things far greater than we can imagine. But the wonderful thing about this is that through God, he can do things far beyond our imagination. So there's a great cost that we pay if we're self-confident. A great cost. But there's also a need to be aware that to understand our own weakness without seeing God's strength and power and being confident in his grace, leads us to do nothing. "Well, I'd like to do that, but I'm weak." "Well, I'd like our church to be there, but we're weak and we're getting older." Who knows that? This is one of those birthdays this year, that I'm going to go on holiday for a week and tell the world where I am. However hard I try, I keep having birthdays. Do you find that problematic? Yeah? And it seems that we're getting weaker and weaker. What we've got to understand is, the weaker we get, the more, if we are like Paul, the more he can use us. Yeah? You're not convincing by that, yes? Nothing to do with our strength, it's to do with our weakness and our trust in him. Because he does it. Do we save anybody? No, as Jesus had said, it's impossible for us to do that. But with God, everything is possible. So Paul says this. "I will not boast except on my weaknesses." Now, you do get that statement, I hope I never get into it, where people come and they say, they start talking to me and I just want to tell them that I'm... I'm 84! You know, you know that, you've seen that, yeah? Well, they just seem to want to tell you how old they are. You know, wow! Actually, if I was ever to do that, just remind me that four years before that, Moses started his job. He started work for 40 years. Put me in my place, because we need to realize that we should boast about our weakness, because in boasting about our weakness, we're boasting about his strength. We're boasting about what God do. "Therefore I will boast all the more gladly of my weaknesses, so that the power of Christ may rest upon me." It's interesting, a year later, Paul is actually in Corinth. And while he was there, he wrote a letter to the church in Rome. And in chapter 4, he gives us the perfect example of this increasing weakness with age. Because he speaks about Abraham. "For the promise to Abraham and his offspring, that he would be heir of the world, did not come through the law, but through the righteousness of faith." Now, you and I know that Abraham had that promise given to him when he was 75 and when he had gone from Hanaan and now was in Canaan and was led by God. And God told him that he would have a great family. Verse, in chapter 12, verse 3, it says, "In you all the families of the earth shall be blessed." In verse 7, "To your offspring I will give this land." What offspring? In the previous chapter, we are told that his wife is barren and they had no children. So what offspring, offspring? What's God talking about? What's God saying? In chapter 15, God came to him in a vision and told him that his reward would be great. What was his response? "But Abraham said, 'O Lord God, what will you give me? For I continue childless. Behold, you have given me no offspring.'" So he still wasn't impressed. God's response to that was that he would have a son who shall be his heir. And said that, as they looked up into the night sky, he said, "Look towards heaven and number the stars. If you are able to number them, so shall your offspring be." Wow! And he still had no children. And 10 years later, they still had no children. And Sarah suggested a solution, a nice man-made solution. "Here is my servant; have her as your concubine." "Oh, that's a great idea," said Abraham. So Ishmael was born and trouble. Continuous trouble throughout his life and continuing trouble in the Middle East. No, that wasn't what God meant. Definitely not what God meant. So we find that it goes on until he was 99. And Sarah was 90. And God again speaks, only this time, he gives a time. In a year. And one year later, Isaac was born, the promise. And this is what Paul says in Romans 4, 19 to 21. "He did not weaken in faith when he considered his own body, which was as good as dead since he was about 100 years old, or when he considered the barrenness of Sarah's womb. No unbelief made him waver concerning the promise of God; but he grew strong in his faith as he gave glory to God, fully convinced that God was able to do what he had promised." Now, I want us to take Paul's illustration of Abraham personally. And I want to change the wording slightly. "They did not weaken in faith when they considered their own body." Okay, if you'd like to consider your own body? If you'd like to consider how much more active it was 20 years ago? Okay? It's about 50. What was I doing? Okay? Can we say, "No unbelief has made us waver concerning the promises of God"? In the midst of our ever weakening circumstances, do we at all waver about what God has promised? Now, I can do that to myself, but I'm asking you, those who know this church, have been part of this church for a long time. Think what God has promised. It's a long time ago, some of those promises. And at times, we can feel our weakness. And we can struggle to hold on to those promises. "No unbelief made him waver concerning the promise of God, and he grew stronger in his faith." "No unbelief made him waver concerning the promise of God, and he grew stronger in his faith." And if Abraham can grow stronger in his faith as he got weaker in himself, then so can we. Isn't it lovely that God gave him an example to help him? I love this. It's not such a good example for us, especially if we live in a city. Because when you look up in a city on a clear night, you don't see that many stars. But I can remember as a child, in our house on the hill, in a village in Suffolk, lying down, must have been summer, lying down when it'd gone dark. How I got out that late when, anyway, that's another story. And looking up and seeing the stars. Abraham lived in a time when there was no light pollution. When he got out at night and looked up, he saw all that could be seen. And every time he did, he would have said, "That's my family. They are my descendants." Little did he realise that actually so are we. We're spiritual descendants. His family is huge, incredible, millions, billions. It was far bigger than he could imagine. But God gave him that wonderful illustration. That when he doubted or began to doubt or got a bit of rheumatism, he could go out at night and see God's promise. So the questions to us are like this. What has God promised? What do we know of what God has promised to us as individuals? To the church? To the church nationally? How long ago did he promise it? That shouldn't actually affect things, but it does. It does. Because we get down about it. How have we weakened since he promised? And does it matter? The answer is no. Because God is a God who does the promises. He does it through us, yeah. But he does it because he's the one with the power. He's not looking for powerful people. He's looking for weak people. Because weak people bring him the glory. Powerful people take the glory for themselves. The wonder he works through the weak. Weak people with faith, who keep the promises and who wait for the answer. That's what we're looking at. What was more likely? That Abraham and Sarah would have a child when Abraham was 75? Or when he was 100? Well, actually, neither, because actually it was Sarah who was barren. But you could say the same for Sarah. You know, now she's 90, is it less likely than when that was years before? And the answer, of course, is no. Because only God could take the barrenness from her, and he could do that at any age he wanted. What does matter is what God promised. That's what matters. That's what matters. It was God's plan, God's vision, God's purpose, and thus fulfilled by God's power, not ours. So I better conclude. We haven't got a clock in here, I notice. Don't worry, I'm faithful.
And purpose.
And even if you did have a clock, it would be on the back there, so you can't see it. Again, what has God promised us? How long ago? Abraham considered his own body. Do we consider ours? It's got more unlikely or not? Does that age matter? It didn't for Abraham. And look what God says to Paul, who so often gets those terrible infections. Aren't people so nice to you? No, I'm sure not everybody was. The Galatians were. And God blessed them because of it. "My grace is sufficient for you," says Jesus. And he says it to us. "Don't worry about your weaknesses, because my grace is sufficient." You know, well, we're not as young now. We can't go and do door-to-door. We can't run this, and we can't do that, and we... You know, young people, I can't speak to, I haven't got a clue what their lives are like. How can I share the gospel with a young person? Or, "I've been praying, we've been praying for those people for so long, and nothing's happened." So, you know, we're just getting nowhere. "Lord, my grace is sufficient for you." And then he says, "For my power is made perfect in weakness." That is a very interesting Greek word. Because what it literally means is, "For my power is accomplished in weakness. For my power is made to happen in your weakness." He comes into our lives, into our weakness, and through our weakness, he brings his glorious strength. Our strength can only accomplish, in fact, often it can't, what we can imagine, which is not a lot. His strength through our weakness releases what God imagines. We're in a smaller hall. We've got fewer chairs that are empty. Could you imagine them full? Think about it. Can we imagine them full? I worked out we can put another seven chairs in without getting cramped. Can you imagine those in here? And it being full? Bit more difficult out there, isn't it? Because there's just so much space out there. But here's an opportunity for us. Perhaps to look up at the sky? Look at the stars? And think, "Could that be our congregation? Could that be all those people who are coming to Christ, and we're going to disciple? Could we fill this little hall before they've finished working in there?" Interesting question. Interesting question. Verse 9, just to finish. In verse 9, it says, "Therefore I will boast all the more gladly of my weaknesses, so that the power of Christ may rest upon them." That's what Paul understood from all this. That as he boasted about his weaknesses, that released the power of Christ to rest upon him. Now, that's another interesting word. Because what it literally means is to take residence. To come and reside. To come and to dwell. "Therefore I will boast all the more gladly of my weaknesses, so that the power of Christ may take up residence within me." You see why I chose the word weakness? As we rejoice in our weakness and put our trust in God, his power takes up dwelling in our lives. He expresses his power through our weakness, which brings him great glory. He can work with weak people. He rejoices in working with weak people. And he doesn't mind if they get older and weaker. Because he loves us. He loves us. And he loves working in us. And he doesn't stop working in us. "For the sake of Christ," then, finishes Paul. "I am content with weaknesses, insults, hardships, persecutions, and calamities. For when I am weak, then I am strong." So if anybody asks you what he spoke about, tell him, tell them. He told us to see if we can't find some more hardships, insults, persecutions, and calamities. Which technically, I suppose, I did. But then it's Paul's fault. I believe this is Paul's, Jesus's word for us for this matter. Weakness. Let's start roaring in it. Not making excuses because of it. Not giving up because we're getting weaker. But say in line roar, "I'm getting weaker. You must be working soon. You must do something soon." "For your power is made perfect in my weakness." Now, let's pray. And I want to ask us to do something. I want us to go home and take this word with us and make a list of our weaknesses. "I'm not good at this. I'm not good at that. I can't do this. Physically impossible." Blah, blah, blah. Make a long list. And then give it to God. And thank him, because he's going to use it. Thank him, because his power is going to reside in you. He's on the move. And he's on the move through us. Who believe? Father, we are astounded by the way you work. It's not the way humans work. We take the weak and put them to one side and forget them. You take the weak and draw them close and work through them. Lord, we rejoice that that's what you're going to do with us. And what you are doing with us. And, Lord, we rejoice that we are going to be astounded at what you are about to do in and through us. And we glory in it. And we want you to have all the praise. We want you to do things that are impossible for us to do, but only possible for you. Because we want to give you all the praise and all the glory, because it's yours. Rest in us, O power of God. Flow through us, O power of God. Touch lives through us, O power of God. Fill this room, O Lord God, we pray. Use us. Use us, Lord, in our weakness, for your glory we ask. In Jesus's name, amen.